They don't feel too good.
What's the public hearing? This one? You good? All right. Counsel, you ready to roll? Yes? All right, we will call to order the regular city council meeting. We have already done the pledge. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Here.
Connell.
Here.
Shumers.
Here.
Obern.
Here.
Musman.
Here.
Kerns.
Here.
Councilmember Obern.
Thank your honor, I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council and committee of the whole meetings of July 27th, 2021, and they be approved as published on August 10th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shumers.
Yes.
Obern.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
All right, public hearings. I will convene a public hearing concerning the city's community development block grant application to provide down payment assistance to low and moderate income individuals and families. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor, but I know our good folks at ECIA want to talk.
Okay.
Kelly.
Hey, Kelly.
Long time no see.
And hey, just for the record, that I was in the works at for a couple of months, new city minister, and before I found out that we guys are being irate, right overnight, city two, so I feel the pain, and I also appreciate all the wonderful things that happened as a result of that, that's good for you guys. Anyway, I had a few points I need to go over, can you hear me?
Yep, yep. Yes.
Good, okay, so, as we know, that the current rate in Clinton for your LMI rate is 40.71 percent, however, the way that these particular grants work, they work on the actual income of the residents who are applying for the grants. We know that the need for, to provide sustainable, affordable housing is based not only on the need to increase the economic viability of the respective homeowner, but it's also needed to stabilize economic viability of compromised neighborhoods that need more homeowners. The number of, which is compromised home values and the sustainability of the number of neighborhoods in Clinton. Project will be funded through a grant award of 151,500, which includes 15,800 for each down payment that will be matched by the homeowner. It also includes 10,500 for each home for technical services, lead hazard reduction and administration, and temporary relocation, and 20,000 for general administrative services. This application will be submitted to Iowa Economic Development Authority, no later than the only reason why we have that in there is we have no idea when the funding will become available, soon as it is, we'll be getting those applications in. The total amount of the CDVG funds requested, again, will be 151,500, of which one half percent of the funds will benefit low and moderate income persons. The target areas will be in the city of Clinton and won't be limited to aggressively. That being said, evaluations of the homes will need to fit within the funded guidelines whereby the max down payment will be 15,800, which will be matched by the prospective homeowner. If temporary displacement is required due to lead hazard mitigation, there will be funding in the grant for temporary relocation of the homeowner and their family, and that home can be safely inhabited. If displacement is necessary, the city agrees to fully comply with the Uniform Relocation Act in Section 104, Subsection D. The proposed project consists of a down payment assistance grant program which will use to assist five buyers who will be income qualified in the lower or moderate income range. The budget will accommodate for the purchase of five homes that includes a maximum of 15,800 for 50 percent of the lower required down payment. These five buyers and home inspection, 2,500 is budgeted for technical services, 5,500 for lead hazard reduction, and 1,000 for lead hazard restoration. 1,500 is budgeted for temporary relocation if applicable, the total budget for each of the five homes is 131,500, and as I stated before, the grant also includes 20,000 for general administration fees. This is an exciting program, it's an exciting grant, and we're happy to be a part of it, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from council? Is there anybody in the room that would like to address the public hearing, or citizens online, star six, we'll unmute you? All right, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Kerns, will you read this for me?
I will, thank you. I have a resolution approving community development block grant assistance, block grant CDBG for home buyer assistance project application and pledging of local effort, I move it be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shumers.
Yes.
Obern.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
We will convene a public hearing concerning the city's community development block grant application to provide assistance to low and moderate income individuals and families for exterior rehabilitation improvements to their homes. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor, but Ms. Brown would like to visit with us.
All right, Kelly, go ahead.
Thank you, your honor, unfortunately, I didn't say a lot of the same things twice. I can understand about LMI rate, that this will depend on the income of the respective homeowner as well. But there are certain tracks in the city that where the LMI rate is almost 100 percent. The need to provide funding assistance for the maintenance of compromised residential structures is based on, again, not only to increase the economic viability of the respective homeowner, but also to stabilize the economic viability of compromised neighborhoods. The number of dilapidated and
She's a beauty.
and the last decade, which is compromised home values and sustainability of the number of improvements in planning. The project will be funded through a grant award again of 151,500, which includes 24,999 for each qualified home. It also includes 13,501 for each home for technical services, lead hazard production and administration, and temporary relocation, and 20,000 for general administrative services. The CDVG grant application will be submitted again to the Iowa Economic Development Authority no later than December 31st. The total amount of the CDVG for 51,500, 100 percent of the funds will benefit low and moderate income. The target areas will be in the city of Clinton and won't be limited to aggressively, but will be limited by the income of the homeowner. If temporary displacement is required due to lead hazard mitigation, there will be funding in the grant for temporary relocation of the homeowner and their family, and the home can be safely, and that home can be safely inhabited. If displacement is necessary, the city agrees to fully comply with the Uniform Relocation Act in Section 104, Subsection D. The proposed project consists of assistance for the exterior rehabilitation of six homes, and about not to exceed 24,999 will be granted to six qualified outfits. The budget will accommodate for assistance for repair on those six homes, is budgeted for technical services, 6,500 for lead hazard reduction, and 1,000 for lead hazard administration. 1,500, one, is budgeted for temporary relocation if applicable, the total budget for each of the six homes is 131,500, and the grant also includes 20,000 for general administration fees. Again, thank you for your patience as I work my way through all that, and once again, we're happy to be partnering with the city of Clinton on this, and if anybody has any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'd just like to say thanks to you, Kelly, and ECIA, you know, stepping in big shoes of Mark Snyder's departure, and this is, I think this is the, at least the fifth year in a row of the CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, where it used to be where it was anything on the house, and you guys actually made a cognitive decision and a vote that we work on helping folks, low to moderate income folks, purchase, and then help them with their exteriors, so those two pieces are coming together now, so we're very excited to continue this, and thank you, Ms. Kelly.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Rex, is this the one that you wanted to speak on? Come on up, sir.
Come on down. Evening, I'm Rex Brandt, Busy Bee Construction. I have kind of a unique perspective on this. Within last month, I was asked, so I looked it up, I've been doing the CDBG since 2012. So, and in that timeframe, I may have not done one of them, but we've done all of them. What I wanted to let you guys know about, these are homeowners that are working, they're surviving, but they don't have any funds to fix it up. And so then it becomes a little derelict, so with the city grant, what the city gains out of this is the house gets fixed up, it gets nice. What the homeowner gains is, a lot of what we're doing through these is energy efficiency. So now their house is fixed up, and their bills are starting to go down. We do a lot of windows, a lot of roofs, siding, and that type of nature, things. It's a big benefit to the city because it makes, it helps the neighborhoods look better. I drive by them quite a bit, and I see that they have continued on. Maybe it's just landscaping, but now they can afford to do that because the leaky roof has been fixed, the windows have been fixed, their utility bill has gone from $1,000 to $200, you know, and their, majority of them are very, very appreciative to get this work done. And it's, it's pretty good, it's, it is my business now, between the city of Clinton and the city of DeWitt, that's all we do is work with ECIA on the grants and rear-end projects. But it's a huge benefit for the city to get it done, and for the homeowners. And the other nice thing that I like about it is they have to stay there. They have to keep up their mortgage, they have to keep up their interest, not their interest, their insurance, to keep the funds, so it's not like we're just throwing it out there. One of the real things that I like about it, with ECI involved, is ECI comes up with a bid spec sheet, and that's what we work off, so it's not like you're giving this homeowner, here's 25 grand, go have fun, and put in a jacuzzi. You have somebody else saying, no, you need a roof, or you need, you know, an uninterested party. You know, it's not me going in saying, well, you know, we should put in a jacuzzi, because I'll make more money off of it. So it's a really, it's really a good system for everybody, but.
Awesome.
And we'll see you in a bit to talk about.
I'll be right back up.
Would anybody else like to address this public hearing? All right, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. And councilmember Shumers.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution approving community development block grant, CDBG for housing sustainability project application and pledging of local effort, I move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shumers.
Yes.
Obern.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
I'll convene a public hearing concerning the proposed sale of city-owned lot 546, Fourth Avenue South. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing, councilmember Sealy.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the sale of 546, Fourth Avenue South, to Dan and Stella Holmes for $500, I move this be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shumers.
Yes.
Obern.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
I will convene a public hearing concerning the disposition of city-owned lot 914, Lincoln Boulevard. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address this public hearing? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, councilmember Obern.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution authorizing conveyance of 914, Lincoln Boulevard, to the Clinton Community School District, I move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shumers.
Yes.
Obern.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
All right, audience comments section, we have one yellow card filled out.
Better leave that with you. That's my favorite, that's my favorite part.
Yeah.
It's absolutely great. We need to get.
Rex Brandt, Busy Bee Construction, and I'm back again, we have completed number four of the gut rehabs, and the reason why I'm not in my usual uniform today is we started demo on gut number far, number five, today. And so about four o'clock, I thought I had better go home and take a shower, or I was going to clear this out for you. So what we have here is we have the pictures, this is the before and the after. Now, while we're on this one, I'll give you a little bit of history of a couple of things we found. I know for a fact that this house is at least 120 years old. In the porch area there, while we were demoing it, we found a railroad engineer's logbook dated March 1901. One of the interesting things is, we found it March 2021. And that's not even the most interesting thing. If you think back, this is 1901, it was a lady train engineer.
Really?
Yes, so that, I took to the Historical Society and gave it to them.
Cool.
So that was, that made it even more interesting that, back in that timeframe, a lady not only worked outside the house, but she was a train engineer and made a dollar a day. Now, also underneath this porch, apparently it was the dumping ground for every bottle in the city of Clinton, and broken bottles, and, yes, on and on and on. The reason why I brought you this one is, embossed on here is the bottling company of the Clinton Iowa. So this was made here in Clinton. We found three of them that were intact. Greg had asked for one and then left it on the table when he left. So.
I took that one.
I'm bringing it to you now.
Oh, thanks, man.
We, you know, we found a lot of bottles and stuff, and, but this was an interesting one. I never even heard that Clinton had a bottling company here, but apparently they did.
They did.
Cool.
So, left side is the day that I got the contract for, to do the work, and the right side is Sunday. You'll see when we get inside that some of my equipment is still there, I decided this time to be nice to Matt and give it to him a day before council meeting instead of three hours before. This is the back, as you can see, we rebuilt the porch, it was, it was beyond rotten.
I showed him this. Yeah, it was pretty bad. This is the back part that you removed?
Oh, no, we, we sort of removed. My guy got up on it to tear the shingles off, and he said it moved, so he got down and pushed it over. Turns out it wasn't attached. Which is also the reason why there is a new front porch on it, as he was removing the siding, the roof started coming off. So I told him to pull it down real quick, and so it doesn't hurt anybody, call me back, I was into it, and it couldn't have been four minutes later, he says, on the ground. So, we had not originally intended on putting a nice new front porch on it, a nice new rear porch, but it ended up that way. So the picture on the left is basically being taken from, well, you see the broom on the right, basically that's where I would have been standing to take that picture. We couldn't figure out why the wall was built where it was at, it was non-structural, so it went away to make it a bigger room. It is a small house that was very much so cut up, and we tried to make it an open concept. So now you can see from the back wall of the house to the front wall of the house. There was, let's see, do we have another picture going the other direction?
Yep.
Okay, so now, for this picture, I was standing at the front wall of the house, and that's that wall that we removed, but if you look to the left, you'll see a doorway. That was the entrance to the kitchen. And then there, that whole wall was filled up with a curio cabinet sort of thing that was built in. We kept part of it for the pantry, which is what you see there to the right, and rather than going all the way to the top, I went ahead and capped it off so they have, they could put the fake plants or something of that nature up there in the future. And of course, we ran the flooring the whole way through. Again, everything is brand new, the new windows, new doors, new electrical, new cabinets. As you see, that's the original kitchen on the left, and the new kitchen on the right. Next to the door will be where the refrigerator is, and you can't really see, because I didn't take a good picture of it, I went thinking. The stove will go over there, and then the dishwasher next to the sink. This is in the process, this was in the kitchen, and that was actually the original bathroom, and then across the hall was the laundry room, and the laundry room was twice as big as the bathroom, so I looked at it and went, yeah, the other direction. So now we have a full bath in there with, excuse me, new surround, everything, again, is brand new in there. And the other side where the bathroom was, and that right in there, we put a laundry room in there, so it's same level laundry for everybody.
I just like the paneling.
Yeah, well, it turns out that they thought the paneling was structural. I thought, okay, the closets are built great, only the paneling went to the ceiling, the two-by-fours didn't. So, that was an interesting experience, but, so what I ended up doing, seeing as how it's such a long house, and we had to start over, I built the bathroom first, because you have to have 60 inches for the tub. So I built that wall, and then literally measured the distance, split it in two, drew a line on the floor, and then that line is the middle of the closet, so both rooms are two-to-the-inch identical. Yeah, we, yeah, we find a lot of things in these, it makes my job interesting. So again, there's the exterior of the house, we got rid of that little enclave, or whatever you want to call it, out front, as we were looking into it, everything, it wasn't connected to the basement, so getting utilities to it, and heat and everything, was going to be more of a problem than it was worth, and so we just got rid of it, opened it up, put on new siding, put on the new front porch, which is a covered new porch, and that's brand new also. New roof. It's
New HVAC.
New HVAC, new AC that's still there. And, yeah, the only thing right now is the carpet is due to go in on Thursday. We've had a lot of troubles now, I actually didn't have many troubles during the COVID closure, but I'm having them now. I had them measure for the carpet before we put the drywall up, and I wouldn't have got it until September if I hadn't called and said, you got to do it now, kind of thing. We've run into material problems. I've had a lot of compliments about the colors, you know, which I accept, and I tell everybody, great, but basically what I did was went down to central siding, and I said, I need X squares of siding, what do you have now that I can take? And same thing with the floor, but they, both of them had really nice ones that worked out well, but other than that, if we had picked pretty much anything else, we would probably still be waiting on it to get here. In fact, with 222, 221, Second Avenue South, which is number five, I'm probably going to have them come in and measure for the carpet this week, and we haven't even started the demo. It's going to be that far behind. You know, we had to wait on some of the cabinets, but, and they are stock cabinets, that's all we were putting in, but they were out, and we just had to wait.
He's going to be a new cabinet maker in town.
Yeah, but it sounds like he's going to be more than we can afford on these budgets for these ones.
Showrooms, showrooms. Make him a deal.
Do you make a quick comment?
I would like to see that. Hey Rex, you better hold your bottle.
Just as long as we're on this subject, I owe the lender in the Quad Cities, where the buyers moving from the Quad Cities to Clinton, I owe the lender tomorrow an amendment to the contract to purchase House Rehab Two, and I'm expecting then closing will be probably here in about two weeks, two and a half weeks on that.
Which, what address is that?
What?
Which address?
429, Fourth Avenue South. Thank you.
Big one.
It was relevant since he was talking about this.
And is First Avenue still for sale?
Yes.
Any offers?
Not at this point.
Okay, and when's this one get listed?
Carpet.
That's, I will be willing to turn it over to him next week.
Nope, that was good, yeah, okay, next.
We have to, we also, yeah, you can't touch it yet. Not only do we have to have the carpet, but I have to have the lead test, even though everything's brand new. We have to have a lead test. I'm a lead abatement contractor here in town, so I'm also part of the lead program with ECIA, but I have, actually on Fourth Avenue, we failed the lead tests on brand-new windows, but it blew in from the neighbor. So even on a brand-new house, you're going to run into it. What that consists of for us is we just have to clean it, they come in and do a lead sampling test, and then the next day, generally, we have the results. And as soon as we have a negative, then he can put his sign out front.
Good deal.
All right.
Any questions from anybody?
Nope.
I just want to say, you know, Ron and I went over there one time to see this in process, and, boy, just the difference between the first step in and that middle step, and now seeing the end step, in how many months, you know?
We started May 1st.
Yeah. Yeah. Just incredible. Just a fabulous job.
And trust me, I was ecstatic the day I finally got stairs put in, and didn't have, we had, we had boulders at the back door, and that's basically how you stepped in, and, yeah, my knee was not liking it. Anything else?
Thank you.
Don't forget your bottle.
Dennis, since you spoke in the audience comment, can you legibly fill out one of those yellow cards for me?
Legibly.
And write down everything you said.
Moving, moving on to the consent agenda, councilmember Connell.
Thank your honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as attached.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I would like to pull 6Y.
Councilmember Kerns, 6Y?
Yep.
Okay. Any other councilmembers?
Your honor, I need to pull 6C.
6C, Lee.
Another one I'd like to pull, but I'm not going to.
Okay.
Very passive aggressive of you.
Any other councilmembers for the consent agenda?
I'll tell you.
Could we please have a roll call vote on the balance of the consent agenda, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yep.
Shumers.
Yes.
Obern.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kerns.
Thank your honor, I move the claims be received, approved, and placed on file for
Second.
8, 10, 21, just putting my own spin on it now, sorry.
Second. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
It's dangerous putting this at the end, huh?
Can we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shumers.
Yes.
Obern.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Connell.
Thank your honor, I move we approve the mayor's recommendations of awards and commissions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, you want to run through those?
I most certainly would love to.
Thank you, sir.
Advisory Appointments Committee, Mr. Mayor makes the following recommendations for your approval. So the ADA Advisory Commission, one reappointment, Tammy Levens to a two-year term, her expiration date would be 7/31/2023. Historic Preservation Commission, Cindy Nagle for a one appointment to affiliate, unexpired term of six years, 3/10/2026 is an expiration there. Historic Preservation, we have one reappointment, Chad Jensen for six-year term, 6/30/2027, expiring. Housing Authority Housing Authority, two reappointments, Richard Roberts, two-year term, and Mary Swanson to a two-year term, both expiring 7/31/2023. Neighborhood Improvement Committee, we have one appointment to fill an unexpired term. The Honorable Ms. Kelly Shummers, six-year term, expiration date of 9/30/2025. Plan Commission, one reappointment, Dwayne Severs, six-year term, expiring 7/31/2027. Tree Commission, we have one appointment to fill an unexpired term, Barb Walker for a three-year term, 10/13/2023. In the Zoning Board of Adjustment, we have one new appointment, Clifford Wilkerson, five-year term, expiring 6/30/2026. We thank each and every one for putting in applications. We actually had a few other applicants that will remain on our list for, is it another year or two years?
Two years.
Two years. So thank you for volunteering.
Yeah, we have...
Vehicle for Hire.
Vehicle for Hire Board, we've never had anybody on it. There's two spots for that. We have two spots on Historic Preservation or one? Just the one on Historic Preservation.
Two on the library.
And two on the library board.
And then ADA.
And two on the ADA. So I've reached out to a couple, one folk, one person about the ADA, and then another one about Historic Preservation, so we're hoping that we'll get some applications in soon. And then I also want to say too that the Advisory Appointment Committee is awesome as well. Good group of people. They, they, they know a lot of folks, they have a lot of experience, and it's nice working with them because they have a lot of insight when we're going through this list and the applications on the people, so it's nice to have them helping out as well. And then obviously, thank you to everybody that serves on the boards and commissions throughout the city, not necessarily the ones that were appointed today, but all of them, because obviously our city wouldn't run well without the citizens volunteering their time to do that, so we appreciate it. And if you're interested, reach out to us, and we'll always be welcome to taking applications for these, so... Any other questions or comments from council? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Shummers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution setting public hearing on the intent to accept offer for city-owned lot at 501 Fifth Avenue North. I move this resolution be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just have a point of clarification. We, I thought we approved this and just striked it last time.
No, we weren't able to. So basically, we have to put it back out because of the 500, 200 piece. We can't do a scrubber near there. So it's, it's like deja vu.
Yep, it is, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman, will you read this one for me?
By all means, Your Honor. A resolution approving submission of ECIA brownfields revolving loan and grant fund application. I move that this be approved as read or amended.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on this item? Go ahead. You want to just explain what it's for?
Can we just talk about this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe it'd be open for somebody to have a fitness center. So this kicks this, this kicks this the next step for doing the BRLF, the Brownfield Revolving Loan, for the YMCA. And so we, I just want to sing that song. So Terracotta is actually already scheduled with Brian Lemke, our Public Works Guru Director, so they'll be getting in there as well to do all the steps, and we'll make sure we follow through on all those and get this moving forward. So hopefully the next time we talk about it, we can talk about scheduling the mediation and removal.
Awesome. All right, any other discussion? That'd be nice.
How many square feet is in the Y?
Each second floor, third floor, actually 6,500 per floor. And that doesn't count the swimming pool, basketball courts, or racquetball courts. And we could have apartments, so they could have rent for them, and they could have their workout stuff. And it's a Y, so it's used to sweat.
Make a nice spa.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution of intent to accept bid and setting public hearing on proposed sale of city-owned lot 422 Fourth Avenue North. I move that this be adopted as read or amended.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Shummers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution setting public hearing on the proposed sale of city-owned lot 640 Sixth Avenue South. I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Sealy.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution to purchase a refurbished ambulance and equipment for the Clinton Fire Department. I move this be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd just like to clarify for the record that my comments on purchasing this was focused on the chassis only, which is 102,900. And so that we want to make sure that the CCDA grant goes for the box that goes on the chassis with the equipment and then with the lift bed. So just want to make sure that was clarified for the public.
Your Honor, Matt and I and the Finance Committee had a good discussion on this and...
The chief is there.
And the chief. Sorry. I thought you left. And anyhow, it was a good discussion. Everything made sense, so I don't have any further comments, I don't think.
All right. Any other comments on this? I won't cut you off. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shummers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving an increase in the monthly credit limit of departmental credit cards. I move that this motion be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this?
The Jamaica trips weren't going through.
I have one question on this. Are these all separate card numbers, or is it one account with different names on?
Both are card numbers.
Okay.
We had before where it was one account number.
Yeah.
One card number, and then if it would get compromised.
Yes.
Then everybody would be shut down. And we wouldn't want to put that much credit limit on one card number.
You have my packet to show on the thing, or you have that with you?
It was in there.
Sorry. Okay, so the Finance Committee went through this. It was, we had some just minor discussions on it. It was clarifications on whether these limits were going to be like per individual, and they had issues. I think you were attending a conference one time, and you know, just things like that where it's, oh, wait, I can't get this through. And so that those spending limits really fall more in line with, I guess, you know, today's, yeah, purchasing policy, basically, and it's...
My, my biggest thing on this is, you know, contingent liability on this side, having that large of an amount out there. I would expect that, I talked to Matt about it, and, and, you know, audit reasons and things like that, we should be okay with something like this, having that many cards out and all that. They're not going to be blocking at that.
Well, there's no difference in the number of cards. It's just...
There is, too. There's a lot of new cards going on.
You're right. There are a couple more for the...
Right.
Yeah, there's maybe five more cards, I think.
Okay. That was my biggest thing is, well, I see...
Don't you reconcile on monthly?
Oh, sure. Yeah. To get statements and match them up with the purchases, you know, like an Amazon receipt or receipt for travel.
Yeah, she's doing that monthly for, and they have to provide receipts.
So purchase emails and things, like when you purchase something, is it, you get emails on that kind of stuff, or can you monitor the accounts, or how, or is it just by them turning in receipts?
It's both ways. A lot of times we'll get a email, a receipt emailed to us.
Okay.
Most times it's us getting the statement in the mail, sending it out to the department heads. They gather the receipts, sign off on it, and send it back. And we do, the auditors look at this very closely, so this is something that gets, when they're here going through invoices, doing their, you know, testing of various purchases, they look at those very closely. We make sure we have all the receipts. When we first started the Finance Committee, one of the objectives, Supervisor Dutterman was on the Finance Committee at the time, and I would bring, yeah, I would bring, he can corroborate this, I would bring two or three of the departments, and they would look through them to see what kind of purchases were made.
Okay. I just, I see it as an increase from 40,000 to 110. That's, you know, that's quite the increase as far as the liability side for the city. That was my only thing. I mean, you know, I don't know what job is my full-time job some days, but in my other job, I manage the portfolio, so I don't know. It's just, it's just concerning to me that as long as we have a play, a policy in place to monitor, and we're going to track it, and it's going to be good, and the finance is going to stay on it, I'm comfortable. I just, having all those cards out there with folks that aren't necessarily department heads is what kind of concerned me off the start.
The good news is we have the dream crusher, though.
He used to trade in wagon weather, and the torch got passed to me.
I know, I know we have good people, and we have good department heads, but it's just, you know...
So one of the issues right now, what they're actually already doing is like sharing the card.
Right.
Even if, say, the Parks and Recreation Director has that card, he's giving it to Chris, or he's giving it to so-and-so.
Which I prefer they weren't doing that.
So it's, or if it's Joel, Joel would give his card out to five other guys to try to, you know, buy something they needed to, and...
I think they have text alerts for these cards, too, that you can set up?
I don't want the text messages.
Okay.
We get called. I mean, the cards are through National Bank. They're right next door.
Oh, they are, okay.
We get called if there's suspected fraud, and there was one particular day where the Parks and Recreation Department was trying, Kathy, Josh, and Chris were all trying to make a separate purchase. And it was so weird because they had a $3,000 credit limit, and each one of them were spending like 1,200 to 1,300. And the bank called and said, we see these charges trying to go through, and they were declining because they didn't have enough credit. And they, each individually, did not know that the other ones were trying to make these purchases. And so I got a little concerned, you know, because one was to Walmart Distribution. It was, the charge was showing up like North Carolina or something, so I was like, just shut the card down until I can figure out what's going on. Well, it did end up that they were each trying to make a purchase using the same card number for legitimate purchases, you know, to run the operations there. They're very good. All the department heads are very good about trying to find the best price on something. And that's why, you know, to your point about having like that open credit out there, in that example, they could have each been purchasing something for $5,000 and putting it on account somewhere. It would be no different than, you know, making the purchase with a credit card.
I just, yeah, my, my one thing, too, is, you know, we always tell people, if you're not going to use the card, you're at risk for fraud more than if you're using it consistently. So if some of those, you know, maybe the battalion chiefs aren't using it as much, we're susceptible to something like that where we wouldn't see it just because it's not being monitored regularly, because maybe it's not used regularly. That was only my, my, not a huge concern, just my thoughts as I'm looking at this and going from my perspective.
Well, if you'd want to add a stipulation to it, to have the Finance Committee review it for the next six months, starting January.
Yeah. I don't know, starting whenever you like. I don't, I don't know, I guess, I guess I was more wanted to verbalize my, my thoughts or my concerns going through this is basically what I wanted to do.
I get your point, you know, when I laid it out on the spreadsheet like that, you know, versus what we have right now versus what would be ideal, I honestly was surprised that the Finance Committee passed it without making any adjustments to it. But it really is following our purchasing policy.
Okay.
With what their spending limits are.
They mirror each other.
And as long as that mirrors, yes, I agree.
Right, it's what we have auditors for, too.
Right. Yep. Cool.
In the, in the Finance Committee can continue to randomly look at these, but I'm comfortable because the auditors do go through this.
I don't think that's a bad idea for the Finance Committee to do that.
But Anita goes through this very well, so I'm, and there's fraud protection on the cards as well, so...
Yeah.
If it becomes an issue, we can do something. I just don't know how it would.
One of the things that having individual cards like we're doing now, Anita said it before, you know, there was times that we were shut down as a city because we were all using that single card, and it takes time. And if you're, you know, trying to get that best price for whatever it is, and you're shut down because we had to shut down the entire organization because of we were all on that same card, that, that really hurts operations, you know, in a, in a, in a bad sense if we're not doing that, and so...
Especially when Captain Cullen is standing checking in for a police, I should say. Kind of funny, I laugh.
And I'm comfortable on that part. I just was asking that for my clarification, just so that I...
Yeah, actually, Anita started this with the National Bank, but they give us pieces and parts that come back, and we donate those based on the points.
Yeah, we earn scorecard rewards. Our city attorney was a dream crusher on that. We can't use them for our, for any benefit. Like, I thought it would be nice to use them for like HR incentives, that kind of thing, but we can't. Anything that the public monies are paying for, can't, we can't reap the rewards on. But we can cash them in for like gift cards to donate to a 501(c)(3) organization. And we've done that multiple times across the last... to donate to a five-oh-one-C-three organization, and we've done that multiple times across the last.
You can't pay it towards the balance?
No.
Because I had a card like that.
Yeah, no, it's reward, it's actual, it's like a catalog.
That's an option, but with public funds, you can't do that.
Right, yeah, our cards probably just aren't set up that way.
Yeah.
It doesn't convert to cash balance.
No, I, well, I mean, if it's coming off the balance, then isn't it just us paying the bill?
It's, yeah, it's not, it's scorecard rewards that really never turn into cash.
Yeah.
It's like you get the Sears and Roebuck catalog and you get to choose what you would like to have from your rewards.
No, I have, I have my card there, too, but.
Cool.
She dated herself there, didn't she?
I believe we are, we already have a motion and a second on this, any other discussion? All right, can we have roll call?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shimmers?
Yes.
Obrin?
Yes.
Musman?
Yes.
Kearns?
Councilmember Kearns.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution in support of the City of Clinton's twenty-twenty-one Community Attraction and Tourism Grant Application for Riverfront Improvements Project and authorizing Mayor to provide letter of support to the Community, Attract, and Tourism Committee for said city grant application. I move it be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion on this?
Just like to embarrass Leslie again, she's been helping us with this. And also Josh can be here tonight, but Josh has been burning the midnight oil along with Jennifer Walker from E C A. Uh, so I don't know, I think we're pretty close to having everything answered. Jennifer's like been the taskmaster, ma- master. But in this member, and we'll bring back, because Councilmember Connell said it, too, is hoping for the whole package. Once, this is the letter that goes in the support package and then this is, we're using everything we're doing of improvements on the riverfront to garner four-hundred-thousand dollars up to that would actually cover part of the Marina improvement that we want to do there. So thank you again, Les.
I approve.
Nice.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shimmers?
Yes.
Obrin?
Yes.
Musman?
Yes.
Kearns?
Councilmember Connell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have an ordinance for third consideration and adoption.
Please read the title.
An ordinance providing for the vacation and conveyance of Roosevelt Street right-of-way and Twentieth Avenue North right-of-way adjacent to nineteen-thirty Roosevelt Street to Brule, Inc. for three-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and ninety cents. Uh, Your Honor, I, I'm done reading it.
We don't need to suspend any rules.
Nope.
Second, okay. We appreciate that. We have a motion and a second for the third consideration and adoption of this ordinance, is there any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shimmers?
No.
Obrin?
Yes.
Musman?
No.
Kearns?
No.
So motion fails.
It's correct.
All right, unfinished business. Councilmember Kearns, six-Y.
Six-Y, yes, which is the resolution for the change order for the Clinton Park restroom project. So I'm, you know, I'm kind of a stickler on some of these change requests, and I think that this is one that could have and should have been caught ahead of time and put in with the packet to be passed the first time. So I'm not, I'm not, you know, going to say no to it, but I do think that we as our, our people that are putting these projects out there, they have to start considering that stuff ahead of time.
I thought we upgraded.
Yep, so.
Well, we did, but I think that this amount, it's, it's a sizable amount for this project.
It is, I agree completely, Ron.
So I think that it should have been in with the initial, because it is, it's better equipment, no doubt about it. I think it should have been in with the, the initial packet.
With the original cost in this change order, would it put the project, would it, would it, this would have still been the low bidder?
Yep.
I would have liked to just keep it and keep rolling.
And remember, the, the inch and a half line is kind of us, too, we went back and said, after all the schematics were done, Josh and crew thought better for one and a half inch for the water fountain and for the, the water coming in there. So then at the point in time, we just, we made the decision to bring it to you guys for this, but to say, you know what? They recommended from the get-go it should be stainless steel because those toilets won't last that long. And so that's what we made, just gave the thumbs up to Josh and crew to say, let's put this in for the council because then the hope is the sink and the toilet and the, that lasts longer because it's stainless steel, so. And we only did that, I only gave them this room because it was still under what we had budgeted for. Not that, not that it's nice to save money.
But you know, I never feel like we have extra money, there's always some place to put it. So I just think it could have been in the original packet, that's all.
I got you.
As an alternate.
So I would make, I would make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Any more discussion? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shimmers?
Yes.
Obrin?
Yes.
Musman?
Yes.
Kearns?
Yes. Councilmember Sealy, six-C.
Thank you, Your Honor. Did anyone have any questions from the airport minutes? All right.
I had a question about number seven.
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Okay, so the air, the city council awarded the airport, what was it, forty-one thousand dollars, which was an in-kind match for a runway project. And the project was fully funded, so the airport commission still had forty-one thousand dollars left that the city council awarded. And what the airport commission decided to do is our snowplow is bad. And so Tom Detterman, um, found us one from the county, which was a good deal. So what the airport commission is doing is allocating the funds from the runway project to the plow.
For exactly forty-one thousand?
No, there's going to be just a little bit left, so.
Thirty thousand dollars.
I brought this up at the airport commission meeting because I, and we also discussed this at the Finance Committee meeting, which you folks will be seeing the minutes from that soon. On, and I think Anita and Matt are going to be working on maybe some guidance or policies or procedures for when we bond or use funds for X item, if they don't get used for X item, they come back around so we can decide.
I agree.
And so, um, well, of course, the city council has their option to do whatever they, they so please. But basically, um, I'm bringing this to your attention so you know what the airport did with the money, so you're aware of it. And if, if anyone has any, if anyone's concerned about it or whatnot, then we can, we can definitely talk about it.
And so you might remember in the past, too, we, excuse me, in the past, we'd actually bring this back to the Finance Committee and it's the same thing that when we, we talked about a couple items that are going to come to you as well on bond premium. So anytime there's geo-bond dollars that exist out there and they're going to be used for another purpose, even if it's in the category of general purpose or essential, it's still in the same category. We feel, Anita and I feel, that it should be brought back to the Finance Committee because there may be another priority that came up. Not saying that in this case, they did, but you guys have to make sure that we're using our money correctly. So if it's not used for that match in this example, it would come back, we'd have the conversation with you all and then you decide what's the disposition of those dollars. Yeah, and it's the same, it is the same piece, but at the same time, there could be other things that happen since that money's borrowed where that you guys need to have, provide your insight on making adjustments.
So my intention was for the airport director to write something up to present to you and, uh, lo and behold, there it is in the minutes with, without any of that, so that's why, why I'm talking about now.
Councilmember Sealy, I'm glad you brought that up. That, this is an interesting conversation and I, and I do like it. But I'm going to go back to even earlier, utilizing what you just brought up, because you were asking about a roof that they needed to put on, right? Because they have a time for a roof to be put on. Couldn't that money not have been better applied? And I don't know, I'm not, I'm no longer on, but to getting a roof to save what's inside at the moment, I don't know.
We were in dire straits on the plow situation.
Okay.
Ours was bad and had broke significantly and, and Tom can speak to this as well, it was, it had, we had to do something about that. Roof, were we talking about resealing the buildings, is that what you're referring to?
Well, it was brought up during our C I P.
Yeah, they get, they've got seal coats on them and the one's going to be done in the next couple of years.
Right.
Yep, yep.
So I guess I will just, just as part of this reflection on the minutes and now that that was discussed, is one of the reasons the Finance Committee had this on the agenda, too, was for the reasons why Matt said, if, if there's fifteen thousand dollars sitting out there, even, even if it's from a year ago bond or two years ago, and the, some of the committees, say like the Library or the Airport Commission that are, you know, kind of, they don't really have a, a complete attachment from the city council that sits on that committee, now you're just serving in a different capacity on that, on that side. So I guess our thought was that, you know, those funds should be, at least come back to Finance Committee to be referred to the council to say, hey, you know, what if Josh over in Parks had an emergency and we need, you know, reallocate those funds? And not just that it stays with that, that.
Well, and we just discussed credit cards and the limits and, and, you know, the, the caveats there. Now we're talking about, I'm going to guess, a higher limit for an airport commission to just pay, take from one and pay to another without really, I mean.
I think, I think ultimately what, what we're getting at is, you know, council makes the decision to bond for X project and if X project's not done, then that money is not the airport commission's money, it's the council's money. And the council needs to.
And that's exactly what I.
The council needs to make, make that decision.
These minutes don't say that exactly, that's what, exactly what I said at that meeting.
That's where I'm having the issue internally with myself, is I agree totally with, hey, the money is there and if you don't use the money, it come back just to make sure that, hey, we're putting it in the, in the highest priority. But is there not a difference between the airport commission and the library commission where the city council allot them funds and it is their decision how those funds get spent?
No, it's the same process, so they, they get allotted funds for, like in this case, they got allotted forty-one thousand by the council just for the runway.
That was for a very specific use.
So there's two different pots of money, if you will. There's a, there's a capital improvement pot and then there's an operational pot.
Well, the sixty, what do we?
Sixty, roughly sixty, sixty thousand a year.
That, you know, that's for general operations, right? So the, the commission has the discretion on that.
So, all right, so we are talking.
Only borrowing money.
We're talking two different things.
C I P and budgeting.
So that there's two different pots of money that the two commissions get. One is operational and then one is capital improvements. We're talking about the capital improvement part of what, of what's going on, okay.
Especially when, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, but even the library turned down money from us because they, so.
Because they wanted to complete the rest of the project, yeah.
So why not just give them the extra money? I, I, it's the same idea.
We do, we do have representation on the library now as well.
Okay, that's, that's right.
Councilmember Kearns is on there, so.
But I think, but I think it'd be a great time, too, is, and we're not saying this is a bad project at all, we're just looking at process. But it'd be a great time for them to come back to us, whoever their president, CEO of the commission is, along with, you know, Marlena and say, hey, this is what we want to do, because most likely you guys are probably saying, hey.
That's what I wanted to happen, here I am doing it kind of not how I envisioned it.
So, so where, where's the other eleven thousand?
Um, you know what, Tom, we'll get some information together for the council and we'll, we'll, we'll get something.
Is there another project that you're thinking for that?
I am not a hundred percent sure, so. Yeah.
But, but it wasn't allocated for that, so.
No, exactly, so, but here's the nice part, guys, is, um, Matt and Anita are going to be working on a procedure for this that we can all visit about, so this, so we've got, so it doesn't happen that way going forward.
To answer your question about where's the eleven thousand dollars, so we, we give the bond money, um, it comes in as, into the general activities of the city and then since that's a proprietary fund, it has to be transferred to them. It has to be received and then transferred, so it's sitting, the available funding is sitting in their capital projects.
I was more in reference to if they had allocated that to something else already as well, but it sounds like not, so, okay.
So then, you know, and I, you know, this two pots of money thing is, is what I'm hanging, you know, my questions on is that, say if, if they decide, you know, one of the commissions decide that, hey, we're going to spend less in this area so that we can use that money to go towards a C I P project to help. I, I mean, I understand that, but I think that's.
Put out of the general fund into the.
Yeah, put out of.
Out of the general operations. I mean, I don't think that would require approval.
But if they're, if they're going to do a C I P project that we might already have, you know, a funding mechanism for, I think that's where, I think that's where the, the questions are now coming up. What is the commission's authority? And that's where, you know, when you're doing that thing, that procedure with them, I think that's, you know, and I, I'm not picking on the library or the, the airport commission, but they are treated just a tad differently. And so we have to make sure that they understand what that difference is going forward, and that's part of the procedure.
What we also have to keep in mind, too, the airport commission, I'm not sure on the library, they have their own bond and they can, they can go.
Library can, too.
And so they, so they essentially could be their own taxing body, we're giving them the money that right now. I understand that, but I mean, that's just, that's the way it's written, so.
No, it can be, both of them are the same.
That does kind of reside on us at this time.
Let's go to the Wayback Machine. Way back, when there was a park board, we actually had this same discussion. And that discussion was, is that, hey, we got the money from the council and we can spend it however we want, including C I P. That's what the decision was, you know, in that Wayback Machine. So that's why I think getting a procedure set up, you know, going forward is, is just going to make it very visible for everything.
I think it'd be good for not only Matt and Anita, but for us as well.
All right.
And for the citizens.
A lot of extra eleven thousand will pay for that thirteen-thousand-dollar toilet upgrade, so.
All right.
Get the polish out.
Interpreting a motion?
I'll make a motion to move the minutes forward.
Second. We have motion and a second, any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shimmers?
Yes.
Obrin?
Yes.
Musman?
Yes.
Kearns?
Yes. Councilmember Connell.
Your Honor, I move adjourned to five P M. August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Second. We are adjourned.